We're interviewing Jeff Kibler today in the Delphi comment office. And Jeff, what office are you running for?
I'm running for the 4th District City Council.
So you'd be representing people in the 4th District?
Yes.
And whereabouts is that?
The South Hill is the easiest way to say that.
South Hill, yeah, that's what makes sense to most people. So first of all, why don't you tell me a little bit about yourself? Look at the camera, not me.
Okay.
And if you need me to put the camera in front of me, like I could sit over here.
Oh, that's alright.
Yeah. A little bit like, not exactly your address, because this is gonna go out on the internet.
Right.
And I'm not sure that I want to do that. But you live in the 4th District?
Yes.
South Hill. And are you married?
Yes.
Okay, don't want to know any names. How long have you lived there?
I've lived at this house since 2000.
Uh huh.
My current address, since 2000, but I've lived in Delphi since 1991.
Okay.
I moved down from the Chicagoland area in 91. I'm, the neighborhood we lived in in Joliet, Illinois was pretty rough.
Uh huh.
And when we first bought a house in there, it was a pretty nice little neighborhood, a lot of older retired people and all that. When we tried to sell the house, it had three gangs running through it and was real bad. Did not want to raise a family there.
Uh huh.
My wife's family, my then-wife, ex-wife's family had moved down here. He helped build the Caterpillar plant in Lafayette. And so we decided we would come down here. Well, we came down for a family reunion and I was an auto mechanic. And so I went, stopped in at Mike Razor Ford and was checking with them. And the service manager hired me on the spot. I didn't know at the time that Caterpillar took most any mechanic, they would, they would hire them. And so the need for mechanics was pretty great. That was in September and then it took me till February to get moved down here.
So did, did you, where did you go to school?
I went to school, I graduated from Joliet West High School.
Okay.
I also graduated from Lincoln Tech, which is an auto diesel college.
Uh huh. So how old are you?
I am 58.
And are you retired or what?
Yes, I just, I just retired the end of January from Caterpillar after a little over 30 years.
I see. And you have family here?
Yes, I, my brother and his wife live here. My mom lives here. My grandparents, unfortunately, we've lost them. They are the ones that were here when I first came here. We'd always been coming back to Delphi for years and years because my grandparents were here. My grandfather would get the, get tickets to Indiana Beach. So I've been going there my whole life almost, it seems, it seems like.
Yeah.
And so when we talked about communities to move to, when we looked at coming down to this area, I said, well, I prefer Delphi over anything. I like a small town. It did take a little bit of getting used to from a Chicagoland area where people just stop now in the middle of the road and talk. It took me a little bit to get used to that, but now I'm one of those that stops and talks in the middle of the road.
Uh huh.
But I've, I've always loved Delphi. It's a nice community, great people. And I've always wanted to try to figure out a way to give back to the community a little bit. But I've always been so busy working and now that I'm retired, I feel like this is a time when I can give back.
Uh huh.
Because I am retired, I can devote quite a bit of time to checking out issues, going around and trying to help solve problems and trying to help the city be better.
Okay, and of course you're running, you have an opponent in the race and that's Spencer Kingery.
Yes.
And so I hope to have the opportunity to talk to him, but it's all voluntary, you know?
Right.
It's not like I can hold it down to their heads.
Right.
And you said something about being a minister someplace?
I am. When we first moved to town, we went to the West Lafayette Church of Christ.
Uh huh.
I knew the preacher that was there real well.
Uh huh.
And we had been there about a year, year and a half. And we discovered that there were several families that lived in Delphi that were going to Peru, everywhere outside of town, to churches. And so we all got together and decided to start the Delphi Church of Christ. And so we did that in 92. And then we merged with the Cottage Street Church of Christ in 1993. And then we were there until 2014. The Cottage Street building was extremely large and we were a very small group and it was bankrupting us. In 2014, we would've run out of money. We would not have been able to stay open past that. And so the Mount Zion Baptist Church on Colony Street had closed down. And so we were able to buy that building and we was able to sell the church building for enough. Hip and Steel bought it, which now the county owns it. But Hip and Steel bought it, we had enough money to renovate the, the little building. And so that's where we've been at since 2014.
So you graduated from high school?
Yes.
And you went on to anything?
Well, then I went to Lincoln Technical Institute.
That's right.
I graduated from there. Then in 2004, I entered the electrician's apprenticeship. I was a mechanic and test cell operator at Caterpillar for about 12 years. Did a little traveling for them. I went to the Philippines and Denmark, a few places like that.
What was that called electronic, what?
With, uh, Lincoln Technical Institute?
No, 2004.
Oh, electrician's apprenticeship.
Oh, electricians.
Yeah. It's in, and inside the plant, that's an industrial electrician. So we work on machine tools. We do residential stuff, but not very much of that. More of it is walking up to a machine the size of a building and figuring out why it's mad.
Yeah.
And that, so.
And you were at Subaru?
No, Caterpillar.
Cat.
And so by doing that, I came within six classes of having my associate's degree.
Uh huh.
So I decided I would go ahead and finish it. That's the closest I'm ever gonna come and so I did. I graduated with a 4.0, which is something I'm pretty proud of considering working full-time.
Is that perfect?
Yes.
It's 4.0, okay.
Yep, straight A's across the board. It took a lot of work, they don't hand those out. And, but I was pretty proud of that. I didn't set out to make that, but I started working at my classes and my goal was to make a B or A or a B because Caterpillar paid for the class. If I got less than a B, I'd have to pay for it and retake the class. So I decided I was gonna put the very best effort I could into it. And so I got about four semesters in and I had all straight A's. And I'm like, well, I see a pattern here, so I just kept staying with that same kind of study ethic. And several years later, I graduated and was done.
Do you have kids?
I have one daughter, yes. She's a nurse and she made me a grandpa a year ago.
Okay. Okay, so tell me, why are you running for this office?
I would like to try to help the city out. I've watched and read what's been happening and I'm concerned about the amount of money that's being spent. And it, it's only benefiting a very few people. It's not helping the general citizens of Delphi. I'd really like to see more things helping the citizens of Delphi than it would be to help just a few special interest groups. And I thought with the time, with me now being retired and having the time, I would be able to devote quite a bit of time to helping that situation out.
So how would you change things? Do you have an idea of, like what your platform is or what you'd want to do? You say that you don't watch my videos.
No.
Shame on you. And?
I haven't had the time, I do now.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
You know, these things are marvelous.
Yes, when you have the time.
Yeah, I watched, I watched the Tepidoo County Commissioners Meeting on here this morning while I was getting ready at home.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. It's a breath of fresh air. So what would you do? I mean, you know, you could probably read the, oh, you haven't read the paper today.
I haven't read today's paper, I mean, I don't get it till I get it to mail.
It's a whole lot, a whole lot about money in the city. And what kinds of, what kinds of changes would you want to make?
Well, I think government needs to be transparent for first of all. There's been some meetings that's been held that's not been open to the public. Things are being hid from the public and I don't think that's the way it ought to be.
Uh huh.
It's taxpayers' dollars, it's not just free money. There's someone that we have to answer to and that's the taxpayers because they're the ones providing that money. I think we need to try to do our very best to show why we're spending what we're doing and be as transparent as possible and to allow plenty of time for the citizens to have feedback into something.
Uh huh.
To bring something up at a meeting and then fast-track it right through the meeting, I don't think that's the way. I mean, I understand that there's some things that become emergencies, but there's too many things that seem to go through real fast when they ought to be brought up and allowed time for the citizens to be able to get back with the city council. The city council works for the people of Delphi, not for the mayor. And they need to, I think they need to try to do that. I think there's too many, well, it seems to me like the city council just goes along with whatever the mayor wants regardless. I've seen that in, you know, read that in a paper and, and I've read that, the Board of Works does the same thing. Just goes along with whatever the mayor wants to do. Now she's wanting to talk about taking on part of the old 25 out there and putting a trail out there. We've got streets that don't even have sidewalks on them. Why would we spend money outside of town and over a million dollars? Why would we spend that money when we ought to try to fix up the infrastructure of the town?
Uh huh.
And make sure everybody has good streets and sidewalks that kids can walk on, that's not raised up, where people trip on them. And I just would like to see a transparent government.
So do you know anything about the open door law?
I know that there is.
I know you've heard the, yeah.
I've heard of it. I believe that when there's a meeting, they're supposed to allow access to people for, for citizens and.
The law is that all government meetings have to be noticed to the media 48 hours in advance of the meeting time. And meetings include any committee that comes out of the city building, any group. And the media has, has due diligence to send a letter to the city and other groups by December 31st every year saying, we want to be noticed of the next year's meetings. I mean, that's basically what it says.
Yeah.
And I have faithfully done that for the past many, many years. And, and I hear all the time about meetings that are happening and I don't know anything about them. Of course, I'm nosey, so I think I should know everything, but I think the people have a right to know.
Absolutely.
Uh huh.
There's no reason, I mean, I could understand an emergency coming up where something happens in a, in a quick hurry. But on any other thing, there's no reason that you couldn't give ample notice, weeks' notice.
And, and the law provides for the emergency meeting.
Yeah.
And the law says, if you have a true emergency, you set the meeting and then you tell the comment. Yeah, so.
Yeah, we need more transparent government. And the other reason is I think that our spending is out of control. My granddaughter doesn't live in this town, but if she did, she couldn't pay the debt that the city is accumulating right now. And that really bothers me because we keep spending money, spending money. When the water project got done, there was extra money left over. They took a survey, what could we do with the money?
Uh huh.
I don't, I never heard of a result of that survey or what they did with the money.
So how would you communicate as a city council member, what is going on? What would you, how would you do that? I mean, you know, I could say, how would you communicate with your constituents, which are in District 4? But, you know, you say the District 4 and it's kind of like saying it to the city.
Right.
Taxpayers and residents. So how would, what do you think you might do to remedy some of that?
I could have a Facebook page. I'd have, people would have my email address and my phone number to be able to get ahold of me. Information's put in the comment. You guys do a really good job, I think, of, of doing that.
When we get it, thank you.
Yeah, when you get it, but then we, that information needs to be made public all the time. And so that would be part of communicating with your constituents is making sure that that information is published. And I'm open to suggestions. You know, someone says that, well, maybe you start a webpage or, I don't know a whole lot about starting a webpage, but, I mean, different ways. There's all, all kinds of ways that we can communicate, even a email newsletter or something. There's all kinds of ways that we can communicate just what works best for the people that you're trying to serve.
Right.
Not everyone, you know, some folks are older, don't want anything to do with electronics. And so, you know, a written page is a whole lot better.
They all read the comment.
Right. And so making sure that it's in the paper is one of the best ways, I think, at the beginning.
And so, let's see, you're up on the South Hill, so you have some businesses up there. We have quite a few businesses up there.
There's a few, we lost Monocle's, I hated to see that.
Yeah. For a couple of different reasons, but it looks like something else might be going in there.
Yes.
They.
I heard rumors of maybe a restaurant going in there.
Oh, really?
Yeah. But I, I mean, those are all plans, I mean.
Right.
Until it's done, it's not done.
But, you know, in, in, in the city, there are a lot of businesses that don't seem to get much notice. Do you agree with that?
Much notice like, you mean as far as advertising or the?
Well, just that, you know, it seems like the city sometimes does business with some and not for, not to others. You know, I mean, we have Watson's here and, I mean, they do some business with Watson's. But there's just lots of different businesses. When the first round of resiliency grants came, Walmart's got shut out. And, you know, Walmart's, you know, when you lose the, the grocery store in town, you lose the town. I mean, really, that's what has been said. So if, if that kind of thing happened again, how would you, how would you work to not let something like that happen?
Well, I think all the businesses in town ought to take, be taken care of first before you would go outside of the community for anything.
Uh huh.
And matter of fact, if you can buy something in town, even if it was a few percent more than going out of town, you ought to support your local businesses over everything. Your local business is how the town survives. They pay taxes, they employ people, they provide services. And if those services disappear, then you lose that. You know, someone has to go far away. I always go to the local, the two local hardware stores and check first, even if it's a little more money, I buy it there before I would drive to Lafayette.
Because it costs money to drive to Lafayette.
It costs money and time.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, if a, if a part is $5 more, but it's right here and in a minute or two, I can be back home working on what I was working on, it's easily worth that little bit of more money because they can't compete with a Menards or a Lowe's. They, they just don't have that backing like they do.
But I think that you know who you're dealing with when you go to Watson's or True Dollar.
Yep, yeah.
I mean, you know the people.
Yep, you walk in and talk to them and they, they get familiar with you and, and so that's nice. That's a nice thing to, to have.
So, so you're running against another person who is a current city council member?
Yeah, he's council at large right now.
Right now. But, so why are you the best candidate?
Well.
Why should people vote for you and not Spencer?
Because I'm honest, I believe I have integrity, I care about the town. I don't have any other jobs taking me away. I think Spencer has a couple of deputy jobs that he's outside of the city quite often. And so I wouldn't have anything that pulls me away from what I do here, other than my retirement activities. We want to camp a little bit, stuff, stuff like that, but, and go see the granddaughter. But other than that, I don't have a whole lot of any, I mean, I preach full-time at the church, but that's here in town. And, and that's, so I'm here taking care of that to begin with, so.
Have you, have you taken exception at any of the decisions that Spencer has voted on?
I, he made a comment one time and I was trying to look it up, I couldn't, I couldn't find it. But he made a comment one time that there was, oh, that's only $30,000. And it floored me because when you talk to someone that is retired or to, you know, a senior citizen that's on a fixed income, that $30,000 is life-changing to them, but to, to just, oh, that's only $30,000, that's such a frivolous. It just bothered me that you would be so frivolous about that amount of money. That's a lot of money, I mean, regardless. And it behooves the city council and those that are elected officials to be transparent, to be conservative with how they spend money. I think that we have such a liberal attitude, we're spending money that we don't have for things that we don't need, that don't benefit all of the citizens.
Can you give me a couple of examples of that?
Uh, the old Hildebrand building. Why in the world we ever got that? That's nothing but a money pit.
Oh, that's 402 South Washington.
Yes. I know it as Old Hildebrand building and it was Hildebrand Idiakouli. And that building should have, we should have never took that on. That's nothing but a money pit regardless of what they say we can sell it for after it's all fixed up. You've got to spend all that money to fix it. I think by the time you get done with that, you, you'll be lucky if you even break even on the money that you spent for what you can sell it for.
Do you feel like you're getting information from the city to know how much that has been spent on that building or?
No, they're very.
Do you wonder or what?
No, they, when I read the information that is given to the comment, I don't think they're very forthcoming with information. They, to me, it seems like the current council and mayor tried to hide stuff.
Well, you know that the comment, I can't put everything in the stories.
Right.
Have you ever done any research to find out about that or anything else financially?
No, I have not, like I said, until I retired at the end of January, I was working six days a week at Caterpillar and then preaching on Sunday, so I did, wasn't blessed with a whole lot of spare time. But I do have more spare time now, although when I first retired, I was busier than what I ever planned on being, but that's finally calming down a little bit now. I'm, I'm starting to get a couple of days a week where I can have a breath or two.
Do you know anything about researching information in the city? How that might go or where you would go?
No, I would just, I would start Googling things or I know you can go to the city building.
Uh huh.
And you should be able to ask for records of stuff.
Uh huh.
And I know that there's some public documents, but I've not done a lot of looking into that.
Okay. Would you be doing that if you got elected and?
Yes.
And stuff like that?
Yeah.
So. Do you know the difference between the city council's position and the mayor's position and the clerk treasurer's position? Can you tell me what each one does, who, who works for who here?
The mayor's elected to come up with ideas and then they, the mayor then presents those ideas to the council. The council decides for the city. They're elected by the city to take care of the city.
Uh huh.
The mayor does not run the council. The, the city council is hired to, or elected, which is hired, to
Yeah.
take care of the city business and look out of the best interest of the citizens. To be conservative financially, to, to be responsible for the money that's entrusted to them, the trust that's entrusted to them.
Uh huh.
And then the clerk treasurer is, in my understanding, is keeps track of where all the money's at.
Uh huh.
And does what the council says. If they say to release funds, then she or he will release funds. But they, there's three, it's three separate jobs, but the mayor doesn't run the council. It appears like it does a lot of times, but the mayor doesn't run the council. The council is supposed to look out after the citizens of what's best for them.
Have you done any, any research about those different jobs? I mean, all, all of the jobs are in the Indiana code. They're all in the Indiana code. And the Indiana Chamber of Commerce used to put out a book called, Here's Your Indiana Government. And they stopped in 2020, but they're still available online. And they talk about the municipal government, city coun, city common councils. They talk about the mayor's position and the clerk's position. And that's a valuable resource, it's been a valuable resource for me. I quoted it many, many times in my stories, yeah.
Well, I'd definitely be willing to look that up and, and read that.
And I would help you through that, yeah. Do you agree that the mayor should be able to spend $50,000 on what she wants without oversight from the council?
No.
The count, that's, the state law says that that's the maximum. It used to be that it was a $5,000 limit a couple of mayors ago. And this council gave permission to the mayor to spend $50,000. And that has happened several times. Why do you disagree?
Well, for one, that's a lot of money. If you're talking about a senior that's on a fixed income, that could be almost three years' worth of social security checks.
Uh huh.
You can't just spend that without being accountable for that. We have to be mindful of all the citizens and the money that's being spent, we need to be accountable for everything.
Well, and, 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 you know, there is accountability, but it's after the fact.
Well, it should be before the fact.
It just, it just, you know, it kind of goes through, there are claims and things like that. And the mayor tells the city council things at, at meetings and, you know, this is this and this is it and, you know, kind of that. So would you vote to change that if you run the city council?
Absolutely. I can understand the mayor having a little bit of discretion. You know, little things come up, I would think $5,000 is more than enough, but $50,000 is way in excess of what it ought to be. The mayor works for the city, it's not the other way around.
Uh huh.
And the mayor should be accountable for that without, and giving that amount of money is just too much.
Uh huh.
I mean, that's like asking, it's saying, that's better to ask for forgiveness than permission. Well, when, $50,000 is a lot of money and you start spending $50,000 here, $50,000 here, pretty soon you add up. I mean, I know the city budget's somewhere around $3 million. Well, $50,000 a few times in a month or however many times in a year or over a four-year term, that can total quite a bit of money with little or no accountability to it.
Okay, I know that you haven't thought about this and so you might want to take a minute. But what, what would your reaction be if indeed the city got financially strapped? If the city was in a deficit situation in the general fund? What do you, what do you think you would do? What do you think you'd vote to do?
Well, the first thing is a city is a business and just like your home, if you can't afford something, then you quit spending it on stuff that you, that are not essentials. There are essentials that you have to spend on, those you have to provide. But there are luxury items that you can always cut back on that don't necessarily need to be done. There are, just, you'd have to look at each thing and see, but we would have to, if the city got in that kind of situation, that would take a tremendous amount of oversight, more than just, I would think, one council meeting a month to try to look at a situation and try to help best handle the money that we have and try to work our way out of the situation that we find ourselves in.
So it sounds like you would have a, an interest in being very aware of the spending and be looking at those types of things, is that about right?
Yes, yes.
And wouldn't just say yes to everything?
No, I'm not, I would not do that. I, I think we need to look at what we're spending money on.
Uh huh.
And I am very conservative when it comes to finances. I don't believe that we need to just spend money on every little thing. There needs to be some justification and how much does it help the citizens? You know, like the money that we're talking about spending, or that the city's talking about spending out to put this trail out to a park that almost no one goes to, that you're gonna have a humongous amount of gravel trucks that, and those gravel trucks do not tarp their load, they throw rocks everywhere.
That's what I've heard.
You, you get people going out there and riding their bikes or walking and a rock comes off of one of them trucks, that will hurt. I've been riding a motorcycle before I caught a rock off of one of those trucks and it was all I could do to keep my bike upright. It, it, that's a very painful thing. And so if, if you have a little kid, it may do. That's a very painful thing and so if, if you have a little kid, uh, it may do. You may hurt or kill someone with a, with a flying rock and so all that money that would be spent for something like that, when we've got. Sidewalks and infrastructure and different things that need to be addressed in the city limits. Uh, I think you would be better to spend money, just watch where you spend your money and make sure it benefits the most citizens.
So are you, uh, are you in favor or do you think it's necessary or you want the city to grow? Or how do you feel about that, I mean, there are some people who, oh, we gotta have more people, we gotta have more people, we gotta have more people, and then there are other people. Who say, we're not taking care of what we have and so let's do it right now and then do later and then there's some people in the middle. You know, where would you, where would you fall on that continuum?
Probably more in the middle, uh, I think we have some stuff that needs to be taken care of, but attracting businesses. And keeping businesses and more importantly, keeping the current businesses that we have. Is, is important because that, you get tax revenue from that. You, they're providing services that if they'll, they're gone, you have to go outside the city or maybe outside the county to find those services. It, it, it's all intertwined and has to be looked at.
Do you know what a TIF district is?
It is, uh, I've read about it and uh, it, it escapes me, it's a tax.
Tax incremental financing. And that, that is used to um. Well, we'll take the, we'll take IPC, cause that was the first TIF district in Carroll County, I believe. And uh, IPC said they, I, I, I believe this is true, but you know, they tiffed up the area, which means that they. Decided to, that the county would capture. All of the tax revenue from IPC when they came. And because that, that was, I mean, that's a real formal legal thing and then they were able to get a bond. To do whatever they needed out there, I mean, that's a real simplified view of that. So, uh, when you have a TIF district. You don't get. Taxes from it, tax revenue. You don't, so you know, you look at the TIF districts here, do you know where the TIF districts are in Delphi?
Is there one out there on the old uh, Gray Turkey Farm?
Well, that's a county, that's. That's where uh, R A M C is. Yeah, yeah, that's a county matter.
That was the only one I'm aware of, I've seen them talk about that in the paper, but I haven't really paid attention to exactly where that's at.
Yeah, you kinda gotta, yeah, it, it's kinda complicated, but there's a TIF district around town. And so the uh, tax revenue. Goes to the redevelopment commission. Um, and um, so those are things to think about when you're, you know, doing things like that. There's, Delphi has a TIF district, not, and it goes up north on Washington and then it goes over to East Delphi. West Delphi, um, around Mans. And that was in conjunction with the county, the county said, oh yeah, you can tiff that up, you know, is there anything else there? So um. Good to learn about, good to learn about and you know, there are meetings that are open um, that you could go to. Do you know anything about the Board of Works?
I know they are supposed to take care of the water uh. And the different, uh, I know they, they spend a lot of money. I know they spend a lot of money, uh. One of the things that concerns me over the years is that. I think it's, the water department for sure does not have a budget, I don't know how you operate a department without a budget.
Well, they don't have to publish a budget, I don't know that they don't have one.
Well, there's not one that I've seen.
No, me neither, me neither.
So if they spend, okay, so if their budget is. Five million dollars and they spend ten million, no, where's the accountability in that, there's nothing published to hold anyone to say, well, you over.
Well, um, the clerk treasurer would not write checks. That she doesn't have the money for. On that, on that level, you know, that amount of money. But, and there have been some council members who have called for budgets to be submitted. From the wastewater department and the water department and uh, mayors have never liked that. What would you, how would you feel about that, what would you wanna do? What would you vote for, yeah?
Both of them departments need to submit a budget and hold to it, how can you run something and not have a budget? Uh, that's like people that have uh, money troubles in their personal life. You, if you're not running to a budget, how can you manage what you have, you have no idea what, where you're spending. And if you don't write, I mean, one of the things if someone asks me about they have money trouble. I'll say, start writing down everything that you spend money on in a month and it's gonna shock you where your money's going. And then now that you have that information, you can start making adjustments, but we have no idea, I mean, there is some accountability. But if you're not holding to a budget.
Well, and as I said, I don't know that they don't have budgets.
And, and to be transparent in a government, you need, everyone needs to know that.
Well, and maybe the city council members have that information, I do not know, because it, it doesn't come to the public. It doesn't come to the public.
It ought to be, that, that's a, we're paying for that, the public's paying for that, matter of fact, they're talking about a wastewater expansion. My water bill just went up again, uh, that was something that floored me when I read the comments uh, from the meeting that. Well, we're just, they were, they got together to talk about the wastewater and they went ahead and passed a water rate increase. Water rate increase wasn't even on the agenda and they still passed it anyway. Where does all this money come from and I get tired of hearing that, well, that's what the market will bear or other communities are this. I don't care about other communities, I care about Delphi.
Well, and you know where the money comes from, the rate payers. Yes, uh, at this point in Delphi, uh, for a house that nobody lives in. It's forty one dollars and some change for that bill. And so how, when, when you, when you think about those types of things, why would somebody come to Delphi to live?
I don't know.
Well, I don't know, I mean.
Right, we don't, we don't have a lot of housing, uh, that's a problem.
Really? Tell me about that.
Well, look at how many houses are for sale. And the houses that they just built on Riley Road, four hundred thousand dollars in Delphi, you're kidding me. That, that's ludicrous, uh, but that's what they, they're building five of them out there. And uh, e- even the small ones, like I think four hundred twenty nine thousand, it's like, who has that kinda money in this town?
Well, do you think that there's a, a, a move to attract the people who could afford those types of? Uh, houses?
Well, maybe, maybe there is, I don't know.
I don't know, I'm just wondering.
Yeah, I don't know. But you, what about all the folks that are struggling to just make ends meet? I mean, I know we got some low income or based on what your income is, uh, apartments and there's, and there's housing that's, that's like that, but. What about our seniors, there, you know, there was talk a long time ago of taking Masonic on out to the water tower and putting senior housing out there. Uh, that deal never went through, that was when Mayor Strasser, or when Randy Strasser was mayor. Uh, that deal was gonna go through and uh, I thought that was a really good idea, they were gonna build duplex, senior duplexes. Yeah, taking it out to the water tower there south of town.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
And I thought that was a good idea, but then that whole deal fell through, I don't know what that deal was. Uh, fell through, but, or why it did, but uh. We don't have enough housing. And I, and so to get someone to come to Delphi is gonna be hard because I think right now there's two houses for sale if you look on. Other than those expensive houses, I think there's one other one for sale, maybe one or two here or there that's for sale by owner. But there's not the housing, I don't know how the realty companies are staying in business, uh, with no houses to sell. Uh, but uh, that is a problem and I don't know how you uh, solve all that at one shot. We need to encourage someone to come and, and uh, build some houses that people can afford.
Have you, have you uh, taken a tour around town to see if indeed that's true, that there are no houses?
There are, I, as I drive around, uh, cause I, I drive around over by our church building, which is on Connolly Street and uh, my brother lives. Uh, down on Indiana Street, my grandparents used to live on Indiana Street, there, there are a few houses for sale. You can't just use Zillow or real- Realtor dot com because that doesn't list everything. There are a few, but uh, the, the prices are fairly high for, you know, if someone is a working family. Unfortunately, when I was younger, you could just go to work and you could make it on one income, now it takes two incomes and it's a struggle. For these families that are starting out and there's nothing for them to start out in. Uh, same is true, you, you look at what's for sale in Lafayette and it, it's just, it's real high. And uh, so if we're gonna attract people to Delphi, we need housing for them, affordable housing that they can afford to, to get into. All of these problems that are here, uh, took time to develop and there is no quick fix, it's gonna take some planned. Thought, uh, thinking through uh, what the situation is and trying to do the best that you can. And working towards a solution, but it won't, it won't get fixed overnight either. But if we don't start, we're never gonna get there.
So. What's right with the city government right now, what do you think is going correctly, in your opinion? I think that was a redundant thing.
I don't know, I've not agreed with a lot, uh, I, I've not agreed with a lot that they've done this, making this street over here one way. Uh, is, that is done to cover up a problem, well, when the whole downtown got redone. The sidewalks are too big, the bump outs are in the way, you can't get trucks in there, if, if someone is in front of the sandwich shop and they're. And they're going to the stone house and both of those trucks are crew cab, long bed trucks, you can't, that's a single lane road now. And semis are not supposed to be going down there, but they go down there, of course, they drive right past a police station with three or four cop cars sitting right there, not patrolling. That's, I mean, and I'm, I know that they are doing other things, but I live out by Armory Road. Those people laugh at trying to make the sign strobe that they're going too fast, our kids walk up and down that road. That road needs to be slowed down, it needs to be patrolled, I watched a cop car follow. A car that had the strobe light flashing and he was right behind him and didn't do a thing, didn't pull him over, they went all the way to the end. Uh, till they went over the crown by the high school and I couldn't see him, he never pulled him over. And it's like, it's, it is thirty mile an hour through there, although I think they ought to lower it down to twenty five or twenty all the time. Not just when the school's on, people go way too fast on that road. Uh, we've had semis come right past the no trucks and pull power lines down. There's no enforcement of anything, when, when you come into town on eight hundred, there's no speed limit signs nowhere. I mean, you're coming from the, from the heartland to a county highway right into town, no, nothing to tell you how fast you're supposed to be going. Until you go down eight hundred, it shows twenty mile an hour, but there's nothing out there by uh, tally ho. As you come in, as you go down the dip and come into town, nothing, nothing by the cemetery, nothing to tell you how fast to go.
Would that be your district?
It would be.
So um, do you think Delphi needs nine police officers?
Uh, I don't know enough about law enforcement to answer that question, I, I don't know.
If you were sitting on the city council. You would have to answer that question because they all cost money. I mean, you know, and it's not, you know, they get paid and then there's the car, you know, and now everybody's gonna have a take home car.
I don't agree with that.
And, you know, and, and there's the benefits and the uniforms and, I mean, not that you don't need police, cause you do. You know, you have, you really do, but there's, if you, if you get on the city council, you're gonna have to be. Able to think about that.
And I would, I would, I would look at that, uh, I don't know what we normally run for police officers, I'd look and see what we've run in the past. To see what we need now. We do need to protect the citizens because if you call nine one one or you call for the police, you need them there, uh, you know, right away. And uh, they've been very responsive, my in-laws live across the street from me and we've had. Uh, several incidences where we had to take my father-in-law to the hospital, uh, my neighbor has fallen. Uh, we've had the police come and help get him up and help get my father-in-law along with the EMS. We have a tremendous, tremendous EMS and fire department here, I, they're so responsive and do such a good job. But, I don't know. I mean, the city's still functioning, I guess, I guess that's all, the one good thing they're doing, but I think we're spending way too much money. And I don't agree with a lot of how there's been spending money, uh, too frivolous with it.
Like, like what? Give me some examples.
Well, the, the, like I said, the Hildebrand building. And then pushing for an apartment building down on Front Street that, there's no infrastructure for that, plus you'd be putting the. The parking garage in a flood plain, uh, because we've all seen Deer Creek run over its banks. And so where is all them people gonna go when there's a flood coming and they need to evacuate their parking garage? And how you gonna get all them people on a street that's only designed really for one car at a time, it's not really made for two-way traffic? Nor is the road strong enough to hold repeated weight uh, of that.
Well, how about the construction trucks? You know, I mean, that's gonna, I hadn't actually thought of that.
Yeah, and that would tear up the roads.
And I would assume that that's being planned for, uh, but I do not know.
I don't think that's the place to put any, to build in a flood plain is not the place to put anything. We've got plenty of ground south of town that could easily support on an apartment building that wouldn't need to go right there. I mean, we've got a water tower out south of town, almost all the way out by the heartland. And I'm not sure, I, I need, would need to look at a map, I don't know how far the city has out on eight hundred, I know. I, I think they go out there and surround that water tower, but I'm not a hundred percent sure of that, how far out the city goes.
The old Doc Baker place on eight hundred, uh, is not in the city limits. You know what that is? I don't know how far it goes out either, but you know, we've probably got a map. So you could see, yeah. So it sounds like you would be doing a lot of educational things. To, to come up and learn things, would you, would you um, think that you would be? Inviting constituents to meetings, special meet, your meetings, you know, like a meet and greet kinda thing. Is that something that you would be interested in? I don't know, I don't wanna give you things that I think you should do, cause I don't know that you should do, you know? And some people are not comfortable with that kinda thing, but um. I've suggested that to several candidates in the past and nobody's ever done it, uh, you know, so. So, okay, so we've been here for forty five minutes, believe it or not. Do you have any closing thoughts, do you have anything you wanna say, you say it.
I'm just running for city council because I think the money, uh, I, I would like to see us be more conservative with our money. Me, have transparent government and have accountability for the money that's being spent, we owe that to the taxpayers. Those taxpayers worked especially, you know, we have a lot of retired folks in this town that are on a fixed income. They don't have the ability to have a water bill double, we, there needs to be some accountability for these things. Uh, before we inflict pain upon someone that is on a fixed income, that's just too hard on them and they shouldn't have to endure that. When we're spending money, you know, a million here or a million there on something that, uh, you know, that. It's nice to have the parks that we have and the trails that we have, but we're spending a lot, a lot of money on that when there's. Infrastructure and other things that could be done, uh, wh- when the. When it was announced that there was extra water or money left over from the water project, my first thought was, well, why don't you give it back?